We have a small crowd today. Yeah, it's alright. We had an election last Tuesday.
Oh baby!
Can you shake your head?
I didn't hear it.
Oh, okay.
I think Ani, not Ani, Carrie got the most votes.
Carrie got the most votes.
You know what?
Inconsequential, yes.
You might be interested to know that Commissioner Fix got sixty-seven point five two percent of the vote in comparison to my run against Reed Bailey where I got sixty-seven point five one.
Whoa!
So Commissioner Fix is...
Yet again.
Wins a hundred dollars and an election.
It's always fun to meet with you, Steve. Anyway, in all seriousness, I am honored to have been re-elected. It's an honor to hold this position, especially with these guys. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve with all of you, them, and congratulations to Dr. Brown on her victory as well. It was a great day in Ohio, right? We did very well as a state, no election issues. They're not still counting our votes as they are in some other parts of the country, so it was a good day. So, with that being said, we have a listen and learn with Marcy Schaefer. Marcy, welcome. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for being here today. How is yours?
I appreciate it. I could talk about parks all morning, and I know that's not your morning, so I'm just gonna give myself a little timer here. I had it ready to go.
What do you say?
Just twenty-seven minutes. That worked. A few minutes for questions. I am the Director for Fayette County Park District, fairly new to the position. I was interim since June of 2021 and became the Director almost a year ago now. I could talk about our parks all morning. I promise that I won't. We do have a lot of properties. I put together some photos of places that we have projects going on now, new things that I thought you may like to know about. Basics of our park district, like other county park districts in Ohio, we're governed by Chapter fifteen forty-five of the Ohio Revised Code. We actually have a five-member board. Judge Vander Voort swore a... sworn in? Is that something? Is it? Okay. Our new Commissioner yesterday, his name is John Watz. He's a county resident. He's retired from Metro Parks, and he is taking the place of Jeffrey Johnson, who served for several years and was a wonderful board member, but we are applying for a Clean Ohio grant, and so the state said that could be a potential conflict. So we do have five members again. This is some of our staff. We are a fairly new staff. This was with our umbrellas last year, which I wished I'd had when I was walking up the hill today, and I didn't. We have eleven staff members for our park district, and a lot of us, including myself, are on a learning curve, but I promise you that our staff love our parks. We have a very dedicated crew, and we're just gonna keep getting better and better. Our mission statement is similar to other park districts in Ohio, which typically focus on sort of passive recreation. There are usually some exceptions to that. For example, we do have Zeller Soccer Park near Pickerington, but we also have the opportunity for historical focus. It's a little bit special compared to other park districts. We have six county covered bridges in the county. We also have Rock Mill. We have Lockville Canal Park, which still has locks from the canal days that you can visit. Total, we have over eleven hundred acres. This is Unmuted, Akina Nature Preserve, which we do not own, but we do have a partnership with Ohio History Connection to provide programming to residents and visitors at Akina. So here's a map of our locations, and I do have some printed copies of that over there. You can see we're fairly well distributed throughout the county, but when you consider population, we're lacking a little bit in the northern parts of the county. We know that there are parks there, but we are your county parks, and we want to be everywhere. We have had some discussions with Bike Buckeye Lake about possible bike trail partnerships in the future. Not probably in the next few years, but in the future, we might be working with them to increase the trail mileage and make some areas a little bit safer. We also have some partnerships happening in the Pickerington area, which I will touch on a little bit later. We are going to go first... Probably everyone knows where Rock Mill is, but just in case, there's Rock Mill near Lithopolis. We're gonna start there because that's kind of lots of big questions about Rock Mill right now, and I wanted to address them. Does anybody nod? Okay, who's been to Rock Mill? We'll do it that way. Great, okay. Love to hear that. As you probably know, it is closed, has been closed since the spring because of some geostructural repairs that need to be completed. Our mill sits on the Hocking River, and the water from the river is what powers the wheel. And normally, the last Sunday of every month, May through October, we do milling demonstrations using concrete from the eighteen twenties, and they're very popular. We get a lot of visitors, and it's a lot of fun for us and our staff. But we haven't been able to do them this year. This is Jim. He's one of our very dedicated Rock Mill volunteers, and it's hard to get a good picture of what the problem is. But if you look behind Jim right there, that is a layer of sandstone that is so soft that you can grab a handful of it and crush it, and it will turn to sand almost immediately. If you look above Jim's head, right about there, that is a pillar that's supporting the weight of the mill. Not the only one, there are several, but as you can see, there's a lot of pressure being placed on this sandstone. Now, what we have going for us is this is a nice solid layer of sandstone, and down here, it's solid as well. There's just that middle section. So I was a naturalist for many years, and one of the things that we do is naturalists try to make things that are a little complicated make sense. So when I was explaining this to my kids, I said, "It's like an ice cream sandwich, and you can scrape some of that ice cream out. Eventually, the wafers are gonna give away." So we had an engineer from Burgess and Nyco came and took a look and sort of fell in love with our mill, which worked in our favor because he did not have time for this project. But he did it, and we were able to successfully bid the project. Work should start by the end of this month and should take sixty to ninety days. It's not a terribly complex fix. It's just a matter of putting layers of concrete-like substance in there, providing drainage, cleaning out the leading edge of sandstone. So it's not difficult or high-tech, but it's gonna be a lot of work. There's no easy way to pull sandstone out of here or get concrete in. So Dennis Keller, I would like to thank you for your help with this bid process. This is the first bid package I've had to create, and Dennis gave me some templates that were very helpful, and he and Amy Ron Tomson both answered a lot of questions along the way. So we're grateful to have this work soon in progress. And then we're gonna go up towards Baltimore to Smack Park, which is right there. We have a few places, a few sites in the Baltimore area. We have what is listed there as the Rookery, which is Wagner Preserve, which is not yet open, and also Biddler Lot across Walnut Creek from Smack Park. We've been doing a lot of improvements to Smack over the past few years. This is a sort of recreation of the Federhood Barn that was donated to the park district several years ago before I came here. The sandstone foundation blocks are original, and this barn was on thirty-seven, near where Century Trail is, where the Ag Center is, until it was moved to Smack Park. This is a conceptual drawing of our restroom project, which is almost complete, but as new projects go, it's just not very pretty yet, so we're using this today instead. This is kind of a big deal for us. Running water like this in one of our parks is a step up for us, so that's a good thing. And visitors appreciate, of course, those basic amenities. It's not going forward. That projector? Oh, there we go. Okay. Oh, and I went too far. So this is one of the trails at Smack Park. We have about two miles of trails there. And if you haven't been on the trail at Smack Park, a good opportunity is our winter hike, which is listed on... I brought a program schedule for November and December. Winter hike is listed on there as well. On that day, we serve food and hot drinks because that's a really good way to motivate people to come out and come. So that's what we do. We have a big potato bar, hot chocolate coffee, those sort of things that we serve for our winter hike. And then we'll go over to Manburg Park, which is near Rushville. This is our newest park to open. It opened, it's been open for about a year and a half now. And one of the features of this park, we are right there on twenty-two, near Rushville, is the Manburg Nature Center. This was the Manburg Lodge built in the late thirties, early forties by the Manburg family. And I'm sure some of you were there when the Manburgs lived there, were able to visit. We had to do a lot of work to the building, but I think we did a good job of preserving the character of the building. And the reason that I'm confident of that is because people that walk in that had been there before, they know something's different, but it takes them some time to figure out exactly what it is. We had to make some changes so that the side rooms... So this is the big main room of the nature center. There's a wildlife observation area out here, which is a former porch that we enclosed. And then there are some buildings over here, or some rooms over here. We had to make some changes so that they were useful for us and also ADA compliant to those rooms, new floors and everything. And we are working on exhibits. So our theme for our nature center is bringing nature home. Barbara Manburg, who was the last Manburg to live in the lodge, loved animals. We have photos of deer that she hand-raised right there in the room. We have photos of peacocks and roosters and all kinds of animals that she took care of there. So when I started thinking about what we would do, how we would use this for education, obviously, animals make sense. That's not much of a theme. But through a little bit of discussion and brainstorming, we decided to go with the bring nature home theme. So public lands do a great job of providing opportunities for recreation and also habitat, but they're not enough to do as much as needs done. So everything that lives in Manburg is secondary. The whole property at one point was cleared. The Manburgs allowed it to kind of return to a forest, and now we have, we've seen a bobcat there. We know we have a lot of coyotes, a lot of birds, all those sort of things. So our theme is going to be, how can residents and visitors, if they want to attract some of those animals to their own property, how can they do it? And it is possible to do on a big scale if you want, but even, you know, if you're putting a planter on your patio, you can choose something over a different plant that might attract hummingbirds, bees, or flies, things like that. So that will be our theme. We, with the change in leadership with Todd Junkin, our previous director, leaving, and me becoming the new director, exhibit creation has been a little bit slow, but we're back up, our education staff, ready to move forward with that. We are gonna have a winter sort of open house in February. So if you wanted to see the building, I believe that's the first Saturday of February, we'll be there. Again, with food, because it's gonna be cold outside. I'll have that for you then.
Marcy, we are looking for locations for our roundtables for next year. I remember being there, but wondering if maybe we could fit fifty people in that space. Would that be beautiful?
So I think fifty would be hard. I want to say yes, but I'm not sure that everybody would be comfortable.
We can talk about that later.
Okay, yeah, okay. I think that the fire code limit is thirty-five. So, but I can think of some other options. This is one of our trails at Manburg. We have two. We have the Oak Trail and the Hickory Trail. One is pet-friendly, one is not.
One is easy, one is hard.
Yes, okay. Well, which one is hard? Like, I'm actually asking from a visitor's perspective. Steps. Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Yes, that's why the steps are there. So when we got the trails done, there were a few that I'm like, "This is gonna be dangerous in the winter." So we put those steps in. And it is very beautiful. There are some rather old oak trees near the Oak Trail. My guess is that some of those are pushing a hundred years old, which is pretty impressive, and they're easy to see from the trail. The trails have been very well received, and we think that the nature center will be as well. We will be building a shelter at Manburg as well, a reservable picnic shelter. The Rock Mill project kind of slowed that down a little bit, so we'll still get there probably in the next two years. I mentioned that we have some things going on in Pickerington that I would get to. Coyote Run is not our property. Coyote Run is essentially a private nature preserve, and a section of it is dedicated state nature preserve. But we have a programming partnership with them. So we have done, there's a lot of rural pools at Coyote Run. We've done those programs in the past, programs for the local schools that wanna come out. We participated in a partnership to provide those. Our next thing there will probably be in March, and if you're interested in, if you're interested in what that part of the county looked like two hundred years ago, it's a great opportunity to see what it's like. We'll go out to those rural pools. And you'd be amazed at the animals that we can find there, particularly salamanders. Just curious, anybody ever see a salamander before? That's great. Most of the time, in a group this size, there's not that many people that know what I'm talking about when I start talking about salamanders, but there are a lot of them there, and it gives us an opportunity to see them. We also do that at Akina Nature Preserve, and we have some at Manburg as well. Salmanders are fascinating because of their life cycle. I won't get into that too much because this isn't an amphibian program, but they also indicate the quality of the area around them. So they're not very tolerant to a lot of abuse. So when we find them, it's a good indicator that the soil, the water, all those things are doing what they need to be doing for the ecosystem to function. So Coyote Run donated to the park district, our new office. Oh, here's a photo of the rural pools. I apologize. And you can see, I took this photo in March. You can see that there's ice still on the water there, but under the ice can be hundreds, maybe thousands of salamanders and their eggs, which is pretty amazing when you think about it. Those are cold-blooded animals, but we find them there even with the ice. And some species are more tolerant of the cold than others, so that they're using the pools at different times. But this is a really great feature for Fayette County to still have these kind of weapons. So this is somebody who had never seen a salamander before, until she came to our program. She's actually holding a salamander right now, but I love this photo because these are the things that remind me of why what we're doing is important, to help people connect to the world around them. So our office, which we have just recently moved, we moved in September, is next door to Coyote Run. They donated a little over an acre, and this house to us... Do other presenters have this much problem?
Yes.
Okay, good. This is, this is our new office. Now, this is a photo from last winter. The interior has been changed into a usable office space. Looks very different than it did when we got the donation. And now we're working on the exterior. It's being painted, probably not today because of the weather, but it's currently being painted. We have been nominated for a Coronet Award for next year, so we are excited about that for this project. And we are probably going to have kind of an open house in fall that gives time for the exterior work to be completed, and we need to make some updates to the landscaping. So one of our goals, we, you know, we have this message of bringing nature home and using native plants. We recognize that depending on where you live, that may be easier than other places. So my goal for this landscaping at our office is to use native plants in a way that a homeowners association still think looks really good and be really happy with what we've got going on there. So it's gonna be sort of our example of what can be done. And Coyote Run probably will be part of that as well, and you can see part of their property during that same time. This is my contact information. I did bring some of our, this is our... I'll leave those here, and we have Max as well. I hope that you'll come and visit our parks. Does anybody have a park that is in our park district that you really like that I have not mentioned today?
Alley Park.
What's that? Oh, so Alley Park is the Lancaster City Park. I love Alley Park. That's where I... Yes, yeah, Smack, okay. Yes, we're very proud of Smack. We are going to be growing over the next several years, as is the rest of the county. There's a lot of things going on that you all know about, and we're excited to be a part of it.
Just all the covered bridges seem to be a lot of the... Trail for the covered bridges seem very popular.
Yes, so let me go back to a minute. Thank you for mentioning that. I'm doing okay on time. This is actually the second presentation that I sent Ani. The first one was a bit too long. We have six of the covered bridges in the county. Five of them are open to the public, and the sixth is possibly going to be repurposed for an observation area at Wagner Preserve, which again is this Heron Mercury right there. But down here at Two Glaciers Park in Madison Township, we have two beautifully restored covered bridges, the Hanaway and Johnson Covered Bridge. They sit over Clear Creek. That is our biggest property. It's about three hundred and sixteen acres. We are working on a way to be able to connect... Our park currently sits in two separate parcels, to connect them. And if we can do that, we can then build a trail that will incorporate both of those bridges, which I think will be well appreciated. When you build a longer trail, which we potentially have the opportunity to do there, people will come from other places in the county. Most folks might not travel very far for a one-mile trail. That's a good neighborhood distance. But to get people to go there, we will be able to offer some longer trails that incorporate those bridges, and we'll have amenities. We have to work on parking restrooms, those sorts of things as well. But I'm very excited about that particular park. We have done habitat improvements there. That park was purchased with Clean Ohio Fund several years ago. We have planted some upland prairie kind of areas there, some native trees along the creek. And the Nature Conservancy is building a collection restoration there for us as part of their mitigation program. So that's at no cost to county residents or the park district they're doing that because that's how they serve, one of the ways that they serve Ohio. All right, well, I actually did okay on time.
I have one question.
Yes.
So your rookery there, by Baltimore, what's your plans for that?
So we, at the Rookery, the first thing that's gonna happen probably in the next several weeks is a removal of the buildings that are there.
Is our land bank there?
Yes. Helping the land bank, they applied for a grant on our behalf to remove those buildings. So again, we're talking about right here in Baltimore. This property was purchased with a Clean Ohio grant in 2019, I believe. It's called the Rookery here because it is home to the largest great blue heron rookery in the state, south of Lake Erie. A lot of, a lot of herons there, and if you drive through there in late spring, early summer, you're gonna see them coming and going. It's not hard to spot them. So once we get those buildings removed, we are removing all of them except for the bank barn. There's a really beautiful bank barn that sits there that we would like to save if we can, but we can't really use it there. The school may be taking that off. So we've been talking with Liberty Union Thurston Schools. They might be moving that barn to their property to use for their students. So we've offered that to them, and they're kind of considering ways to make that work. Once the buildings are gone, we will be doing a trail system there. And right next to this property is the Liberty Union Thurston Land Lab. So we will be able to connect those two, get their students onto our land, our park property, and our visitors can potentially visit the land lab as well. That is where we hope to potentially repurpose the Rolie Covered Bridge. The Rolie Covered Bridge was at the fairgrounds until, I think, around 2017, and the windstorm blew it over. We have it in storage, but it's not in great condition, as you would imagine, being blown over by a windstorm. But there's another bridge near Baltimore that has been offered as a possible donation. So maybe we can use, repurpose both of those bridges to create an observation area on the trail. We have to maintain a certain distance from the rookery, but there's a spot that kind of sits up high that would be a good place for students and visitors to go and watch the rookery. We have one trail plan that will be fully wheelchair accessible at that property and longer than what some other trails would be there. We would like to connect it to the rest of the village as well. I think those are probably the highlights there. We have done some planting with Fish and Wildlife. We planted some native plants there. The property could use a controlled burn, and I don't know if everybody is familiar with that, but there are benefits to burning certain ecosystems, helping them establish and helping kind of knock back invasive plants. We wanted to do that this past spring with US Fish and Wildlife, but as many of you probably know, it never stopped raining. So we missed our window. Hopefully, we can do it this spring. Anything else specific about that or any of our properties?
Richard Davis. I just have two questions if I might.
Yeah.
One, I just think it might be helpful for folks to understand that even though it's Fairfield County Park District, it's a separate political subdivision from the county. The county doesn't run the parks, or does. But in any event, I was curious if you have a, just a, maybe a short version of what I'll call your fiscal horizon. I'm very familiar with the history of parks and the challenges over thirty years as it related to funding of operations.
Sure.
And I was just curious how things look today. As you say, look out five or ten years, do you see, you know, a path towards fiscal health?
I think so, yes. We did, as you probably know, passed our second levy last May. And I know, Commissioner Davis, you were part of the original levy that did pass in 2011. I volunteered for that for a while, but my son was born a few days after Election Day, and I had a two-year-old daughter, so what I could do is a bit limited. But we did pass our levy last May with right around sixty-nine percent, which was a renewal. It would have been great if we could have had a replacement with a little bit more funding, but given the pandemic and the effects of that, we kind of thought that wasn't really the time to ask. But yes, I'm still learning about a lot of these things, but I do think we are in pretty good shape to levy this for ten years. I'm trying to better understand how the housing development in the county impacts our budget, which is something that I'm trying to really understand a little bit better. It should bring in some more money for our park district. But I think we're in a good position to maintain the parks that we have. We still have some that need to be open. We do have plans for each park that isn't open so that we know what we're building towards. So if we can only do a small investment in any given year, we can make it make sense for the bigger plan.
Do you have any metric on annual visitation?
We do. We do track our visitation. And we saw about a forty percent increase in 2020, which was typical. And the exact numbers, I don't want to claim to remember them off the top of my head because I don't. But the counts, the counts that we had went up by about forty percent. And then when they came back down, they still have maintained about twenty percent over where they were before the pandemic. So there's not many silver linings to the pandemic, as we all know, but I do think that it encouraged people when their normal schedules were not working out, normal activities, to get out and spend more time. Our parks, this is a pattern that other park districts have seen around the state as well.
Last question if I might. There was a favorable comment earlier about Alley Park, which I know is a city park. One of the many things offered at Alley Park, which I know people appreciate, is the... I'll call it Event Center. I know it's not an event center, but it has events. People really appreciate that environment and the structure and things. And I didn't know if your park system has any, any kind of event center or event opportunities. It's a little bit consistent with what Administrator Cordell was asking about earlier, but would, do you have anything in those, in those lines or in the pipeline?
Yeah, do you, do you mean for events that we provide to the public or that you have spaces available for people to reserve? Because I know that you built the Alley Park, and I just wanted to make sure I understand.
I was actually curious about the latter.
Running spaces.
Right.
Oh, so we do have some small ones, which are, we have three of our covered bridges can be reserved for weddings, they're a popular destination for weddings. We have two picnic... two picnic shelters that are reusable as well. The one at Mamberbury that's built will also be reusable. And then we have the barn at Smack Park, which we this winter are planning to figure out how we can go back for public use. Events is a possibility there. The nice thing about that park as well is that there's good parking. That's something that we run into consistently.
Does Smack already have restroom facilities?
They're being built and it's almost done. It was intended to be completed for our harvest celebration, which is a big event that we do at Smack in September. But again, weather didn't really cooperate. The project is kind of behind. But yeah, so there will be restroom facilities there, parking, and then use for that barn, but we have to figure out.
I have just one more question. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Does the park system have debt? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I appreciate your time. Come back. He's trouble wanting to have more things to report to you. That'd be great. And I can provide you with management, just that you want more information with your next comment. You're a little more specific. I am a slow learning curve.
No, and I, I appreciate that. And I just still have memories of the 30-year drought, if you will. And if I were in your position, that would the possibility of ever returning to that would keep me up at night.
Oh, it does.
Marcy, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
This goes back to somebody else. Thank you.
All right. Set up a cookie eater before you leave.
Legendary cookies, I think I would do that.
Time for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission this morning? Thank you again, Marcy.
Thank you.
Morning, Ray.
Good morning. Kind of cold morning outside. And we're fortunate. We had some beautiful weather before it came along. We can complain. The looking back over the past week, at least for me and others that I know, last Tuesday was not what we had hoped for.
I'm still here, Ray.
Yeah. I didn't mean for you. I had to look at another level.
Pass it up, sorry.
Yeah, okay. But I do want to consider what is really important that we all need to keep in mind. So I have this morning a prayer that I'd like to offer. Dear Heavenly Father, do not abandon us to the powers of darkness in our need. If you do not intervene, our nation will be lost. And yet we know you care about the hearts of men. Rescue us from the tyrants around us. Remove the ungodly persons' power, those bent on the works of the flesh and the works of darkness. Bring them to repentance, and if they will not repent, bring them to judgment. Deliver us from our oppressors and let your spirit embolden us to walk in the authority of Christ, who redeemed us from the works of darkness. Render your verdict, King of Glory, upon the land. Shut them out to the envy, expose the hidden work of darkness, and release the light of your kingdom in our hearts, in our homes, and in the ways and highways, in the public and private arenas. May the sons and daughters of God rise in authority of the King of Kings and slay the giants opposing the living God, and make open spectacles of the priests and servants of wickedness for your great name and for your glory. We call upon you, Ancient of Days, to arrest the wicked, wickedness in our land. Deliver your people and release your power and glory. Let God arise and his enemies be scattered. May the children of God arise and and shatter the works of the darkness, that all may know Yahweh is God and there is none other, that Christ is the King and holds the title deed of earth. He has, and has come to set captives free, to heal the broken and to save the lost, to reconcile mankind and to create. Thank you, Lord. I'll leave it at that. And we need to be considering that the man, now the Father created the earth and every one of us and all that we conceive. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. So anyone else who would like to address the commission this morning?
Thanks, sir.
Yes, I got a printer working again at home. Okay. Tom cardiologist links sudden deaths to COVID vaccine. Shots surpassed any guardrails for safety. A renowned cardiologist, Dr. Peter McCullough, he's even saying that this study found about 100 fatal cases of myocarditis leading to the vaccine. Next, the solidarity argument for forced mass vaccination turned out to be false already. When the vaccines were launched, it was known that they would not protect from the spread of infection, yet millions of people have taken the vaccine mainly because of heavy social pressure. Next, women sue, the woman sues the hospital that allegedly gave her mastectomy, has thrown as a child. And she calls this, they were liars and mutilators. Now, you can read the rest of that, but my own comment here is now if this lawsuit goes through on this, just how many lawsuits will be brought against government for the ill effects of the COVID shot? Next, Democrats renew push to force the COVID mask wearing as winter nears. And this is the renewed demands for masking are completely unawarded and ineffective. The next Border Patrol lifts the vaccine mandate for personnel. Now, it's a joke, one person says. It's a joke because we're so worried about COVID that we're letting all these aliens and unvaccinated and untested that we're not doing anything for them, right? And then another one says, it does very much feel like we're being tossed around and our lives don't matter. Yeah. And then I have another comment there. Same is true for so many employees who were forced to have a shot or lose their job. Next, NBC News admits that the anti-vaxxers were right about COVID shots causing myocarditis. And underneath that, studies would have showed different results had the CDC not mysteriously deleted thousands of deaths from its vaccine adverse event report system various. And a July 22 poll of 1,500 randomly selected respondents found that twice as many Americans have lost a household member to a COVID vaccine injury as have lost one to a COVID disease. I thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission this morning?
Thank you. My name is Steve Feeney. And I guess before I start, I'd just like to say I'm so thankful to God that I live in Ohio where we know the answer at the end of Election Day. And also, the park system in this county is absolutely fantastic. I love it. So. My name is Steve Feeney. I've added my name to the contact information sign and sheet. I'm here to voice my opposition to all utility solar plants in Ohio, including here in Fairfield County. Fundamentally, there are many reasons to oppose solar installations, but here are two. In the last 600 million years, atmospheric carbon dioxide levels have not been lower than they are now. Two, if there was zero carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, plants wouldn't survive. If plants can't survive, we can survive. From an economic perspective, solar plants dramatically increase the cost of electricity. Paul Grossman, an author of several books on energy policy, argues that in just about every case, a large percentage of electricity is generated by solar and wind, the cost of electricity to consumers has risen dramatically. What is the reason for further impoverish the poor and disrupt economic life? Over decades, government, industry, and academia have increasingly invested in solar and wind. That means a great deal of money and influence are at stake, and the current winners are not about to give up without a fight. Very recently, a fellow named Jeff Curry of Goldman Sachs said, "In the last 10 years, the world has invested $3.8 trillion in renewable energy, and this has reduced fossil fuels usage from 82% to 81% of overall world energy consumption." 1%, $3.8 trillion. Two years ago, Mark Mills did a short video entitled, "What's Wrong With Wind and Solar?" In a nutshell, it's environmentally damaging and way too expensive. His arguments? Renewable energy requires a massive increase in the mining of metals, 1,000 to 2,000%. Where will that be done? It'll be here in the U.S. Who will shoulder the burden of these massive mining increases? Slade laborers in China and Africa. The power needed to extract these metals? Mostly fossil fuels, of course. The used solar panels, the used wind turbine blades, the spent batteries will be an epic waste problem, far outpacing current plastic waste disposal. With the current concern of this commission regarding sufficient housing here in Fairfield County to accommodate the intel influx, it seems even more foolish to gobble up land for solar farms. Ohio solar plants don't help Ohioans, but they do enrich developers. Please don't support solar farms in Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission this morning? All right, legal updates. Your first official update. All right, thanks for your shift.
Okay, ARP update from the 3.6 received. 19.4 has been appropriated, 9.8 expended, and 5 million incurred. Sharing with you a nature works grant program that we received notification on.
Can I ask a question? I just want to make sure I understand the language. When we say 9.8 expended, does that mean that $9.8 million that was in the county treasury, so to speak, is now left the county treasury? Is that right? And the reason I ask that question is I just want to make sure for meetings we're going to have later today, for example, in the Investment Advisory Committee meeting, when we're talking about liquidity, when we're thinking about the ARP component of liquidity, is it fair to say that we need access over the coming, now what I'll call three years instead of four? We, we need access to $20 million in round numbers from the liquidity standpoint as it relates to ARP?
Some of the 19.4 that's been appropriated is over the 24. I mean, it's, it's not that it's all going to happen in 23, if I'm understanding.
You're saying that in the next several years, the rest of that money needs to be available throughout. You're right.
All 30 would need to be.
But 10 is already gone.
Correct.
So 20, is there a liquidity number for purposes of ARP discussions?
Some could go into 25 and 26.
Understood.
It's already incurred, but the incurred would make it unavoidable.
I understand. Thank you.
All right, back to nature works grant program. So we did receive, there was 1.7 million in grants to support dozens of new outdoor recreation projects. And there was a project in Fearfield County that did receive funding, and this was with the help of Higgs Partners. It's the Hunter Barber Campus Park in Thurston. They're going to get some money for accessible playground equipment and rubber mowers. So appreciative of Higgs Partners being able to help them out. Want to add anything to that, Ray?
Yeah, I mean, this is the first, like, result we got back, like a yes or a no so far on the grant application, so it's. And they're going to be meeting with county as a whole later this afternoon. Rand's able to talk about next year where county departments to be able to help us with some favor grants than that.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you. We appreciate the partnership we have with them. Highlights of resolutions. The review packet contains a list of administrative approvals, and there are 23 resolutions on for the voting meeting today. Couple to point out, there is the resolution approving the appointment of Jody Hayer-Prince to the Fearfield County Foundation Board following the interview that she had last week. Also, a resolution to revise the prima facie speed limit for Coon Path Road beginning at State Route 158 and ending about 0.37 miles west of Stringtown Road, reducing that from 55 to 45. Also, a resolution to approve the purchase of Cisco Duo Security Licensing and Implementation Services for the purpose of enhanced security for county operations. So this will allow us to be moving forward with a multi-factor authentication. Dan, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I actually think it's important for us as county staff to know that while it's not the future that we will see, it is something that will help us better give better customer service to the citizens because it lessens our chance for cycle. So, you know, for that reason alone, I think it's important. There are many reasons behind it. I was kind of thinking through, like, as a kid, we had a bucket where customers that bought sweet corn from us would put their money in. But then as users went by, that bucket turned into a metal box that had a lock on it. In the same way, we have a little bit added security for us to log into computers when this is implemented. And it's just, as life is, we always have to change stuff. I'm excited for it, and I think it'll be a benefit for citizens.
And Dan, we'll be talking a little bit more in detail at the roundtable this afternoon about what that will look like to the folks.
So you're making it easier for us to log in, is that what you're saying?
More secure.
Yeah, making the service that we provide for our citizens.
That is, well done.
And then lastly, there is a resolution on to approve an e-payment services agreement between Point and Pay and the county for processing of electronic payments. Just a reminder that Level 4 budget entry ends on Monday, November the 21st. Couple recognition items here. County Auditor Dr. Brown shared appreciation from a constituent with a complex property boundary issue in part. Thank you for your help. All the folks in the auditor's office are super to work with. County Auditor Dr. Brown shared appreciation from Lillian Davidson. I wanted to reach out to express my appreciation for the incredible helpfulness of the county auditor's payroll department. Over the past two months, I've had to reach out to all of them on multiple occasions, and I'm always met with very cheerful, encouraging response. This makes my job so much smoother and is very much appreciated. Please know how much I appreciate their willingness to assist, no matter how minute or expansive the need. County Auditor Dr. Brown shared appreciation for Juvenile Courts Resource Center. Thanks for the innovative and ongoing Wheel of Fortune activities that help promote positive life lessons. The 212, the extra degree book to support extraordinary results that is part of the county auditor's book club, was shared on November the 10th. County Auditor Dr. Brown shared that the tax abstract for the ensuing year was approved by the state of Ohio as of 11/8/22, much earlier than it has been approved in the past. Thanks to all the county employees that participated in the United Way Run Walk this past weekend. Dan was even a volunteer for the event, so thanks, Dan. And also thank you to Lori Hawk for her work on completing the county's United Way campaign. Thank you to Dennis Keller and others for their work on the Board of Elections Drive Through Dropbox. Received a lot of activity this year, so good timing for that. Thank you also to the facilities team for the work in preparing the Fairfield Center for today's roundtable and for putting some holiday touches on the courthouses. Then a calendar review, invitations received, please.
Under calendar review and invitations received, later this morning, the Investment Advisory Committee meeting at 10:45 a.m. in the Commissioner's hearing room. Also later today, the roundtable meeting at 1 p.m. at the Northwest Government Services Center located at 12941 Stone Creek Drive in Pickerton, Ohio. The Developmental Disabilities Meeting, Tuesday, November 14. The Developmental Disabilities Meeting, Tuesday, November 14, 2022, at 6 p.m. at the D.D. Admin Building located at 795 College Avenue in Lancaster, Ohio. The FACFC Annual Meeting, Thursday, November 17, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. at the Life Church Vineyard located at 5550 Lancaster Newark Road, Northeast Pleasantville, Ohio. The Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency Meeting, Thursday, November 17, 2022, at 11:30 a.m. online via Zoom.
It is also in person as well, Commissioner Levacey.
The 2022 Red Kettle Campaign Kickoff Lunchon, Thursday, November 17, 2022, at 11:30 a.m. at the Mill Event Center located at 431 South Columbus Street, Lancaster, Ohio. The MCJDC Board Trustees Meeting, Friday, November 18, 2022, at 9 a.m. at the Multi-County Juvenile Detention Center located at 923 Liberty Drive in Lancaster, Ohio. The MCJDC.
Ask a question on that?
Sure thing.
Oh, never mind, I got it. Go ahead.
The MCJDC Joint Board of Commissioners Meeting, Friday, November 18, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. at the Multi-County Juvenile Detention Center. And lastly, an invitation for the South Lincoln Watershed Conservancy District Annual Meeting on Friday, December 16, 2022, at 2 p.m. at the Lincoln County Courthouse in Judge Marceline's courtroom located at 20 South Second Street, Newark, Ohio. Under correspondence, a letter from the Fairfield County Auditor, subject update on special projects, tax increment, financing resource, and new construction summary. And lastly, a press release from Fairfield County Adamage titled, "Fairfield County Adamage welcomes new service provider," dated Wednesday, November 9, 2022.
Jail population last week, November the 8th, it was at 280, with 40 of those being contracted placements. Today, the sheriff reports 285, with 39 of those being contracted placements. All I have.
All right, whole business. Can you share your dates?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Levacey. Okay. So yesterday, Commissioner Levacey and I had the opportunity to attend the Ohio ESC Association's annual awards that were, we were presented with the Torch Award. We were one of several that received that award. Basically, it was the ESC's way of saying thank you to the county government for the ongoing support financially of their situation and all the work that Dennis and his team did last year in renovating their facility. They were grateful for that, complimentary of that, and we got to this nice little award here that Dave is going to display in his office. We miss Commissioner Davis. It was a great breakfast.
There's all three of our names on there. I had no idea why we were getting an award, and I'm still not clear, but I really appreciate the award.
Yes, I also had the chance to have a conversation with the Rotary that OUL, and appreciate the opportunity to kind of continue to share what's going on with our county government. And then last week, we had the opportunity to meet with two different townships, Liberty Township and Greenville Township. Tony did a great job presenting the water and sewer kind of, you know, future plans, or at least a starting point for them, and we had good conversations with both sets of township trustees about the residential development that we know is coming this way and how they can best prepare for it. They're very interested in participating in the land use plan development that Rick and his team and teams make or are putting forth. So there's some continued momentum there with, I would say, a shift, a paradigm shift for the townships from being anti-development to being, I don't want to say embracing it yet, but they're at least listening and asking questions and interested in learning how they can benefit from growth. So I think we're making progress, and I appreciate Tony and Rick's efforts in that. So any other old business for the commission?
I just wanted to report on the drop-in meetings for payroll are going to continue. We've had really good success with this, and previously, there was a new module called Advanced Scheduling that we were going to be putting in place for the sheriff's office, and we're letting them guide the implementation schedule for that. So that'll be in '23, after they have some staff changes they're expecting with the bidding process that they have in their positions.
Thank you. So any other old business? New business, Commissioner Davis?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yep.
Glenn Eider, is there any other new business? Dr. Brown?
So when Marcy was speaking earlier about her hopes in that the levy would produce some additional revenue for her, even though it was a renewal, that's when new construction comes in. So the new construction value for the collection year of '23 is $99.6 million, which most is residential, 80% is residential, but that's about a 26.35% increase over the previous year. So that's a very significant increase for the county, one of the more significant increases we have seen over time. So that is something that'll be helpful, but at the same time, it's a lot of people and a lot of burdens on various different programs as well. But it is $99.6 million, and that is a tremendous number. A lot of counties would be very happy to have that type of increase in new construction. We do expect to see additional TIP work in the future. We know that there will be more, just when you have growing type of the population as well as growing development. And with that, there's a resource that I sent to you that's a very good one to read, and it has a lot of the summaries from research about what are pitfalls and what are advantages. And at the same time, we are asking for Tyler Technologies on the real estate side to update our program so that we won't have to do that manually in terms of the production of reports. And Franklin County is also asking for it, which will bolster the idea that it'll get done when a metropolitan county asks for such of an adjustment. So that's something that we're doing to plan for the future, and it's a really good topic to explore from multiple different viewpoints. And then Bennett has a copy, an advanced copy of the MCJDC letter that will be provided on November 18 for your review.
All right, any other new business?
We have opened up the courthouse parking lot again with a slight rearrangement. We've also decorated the pine tree in front of the courthouse that we always wanted to do, and it's lit now, and beautiful. And last Friday, the weather was atrocious. The contractor was not able to replace the cooling power out here in the backyard because of that bad weather. It would have been dangerous. So that's rescheduled for the Friday after Thanksgiving, which is another holiday for us, so it makes it convenient for us, but we'll be doing that. It does not involve a power outage unless something were to go wrong, so.
All right. Anything from emergency management?
Engagement plan is almost complete. I hope to have a resolution before noon next week to vote on adopting a federally approved.
It's a big, quick footnote. I don't know who all experienced it, but I guess it would have been about 9:15 or so last night, but every home on the east side of Lancaster shook, and it seemed there was an explosion of some kind or something, and many of us were unclear what had happened. But I guess the leading theory is that it was a sonic boom from an F-16 or something, breaking the sound barrier as it went over the community. It was pretty wild. I mean, literally, the entire house shook, and there were a lot of comments on social media, the whole whole eastern half of the county, houses were shaking. It was unusual experience. Yes, danger zone.
All right, is there any other new business? That will go to our voting pattern. Please rise and be very long. Join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands foundation under indivisible liberty and justice for all. Are there any announcements? Sir, motion for the approval of the minutes of November 8?
To move.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Levacey, Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Minutes passed 3-0. From the Commissioners, Resolution 2022-11-15-A, a resolution approving the appointment of Ms. Jody Fair Prince to the Fairfield County Foundation Board.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey. Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0. From the Fairfield County Auditor Payroll, Resolution 2022-11-15-B, a resolution authorizing a memo expense, memo receipt for the general fund, 2% administration fee for managing the county self-insurance program, Fund Number 5376 to General Number 1001.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just briefly about my, like, many of you, I think, I've seen it for virgin false, and I'm acquiring points and doing some things that I'm supposed to do that. I lied about my weight.
Up or down?
I said I weighed five pounds less than I actually do when it asked me to put my weight in, and it still came back and suggested that my weight was a significant health concern for me. So I think that's full of crap. Now, I'm enjoying it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolutions passed 3-0. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2022-11-15-D, a resolution to revise prima facie speed limit to Coon Path Road.
Go ahead and tell them.
No, I will.
Please tell me.
It's prima facie.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion?
So just, you know, I can guess this section of that the speed limit's been revised downward by the 45 on this section. And I don't have any problem with that. You all will, anyone else, because those who appreciate the reduced speed limit will appreciate it. Those who want to go 65 on things have problems as well.
Okay.
You don't require this? We have bridges we're going.
Jeremiah, would you like to add a comment?
Yeah, sorry, Eric walked in my office, was talking to me. I got a little distracted there, but thank you. Yeah, we were working with ODOT. They're building a roundabout at the intersection of 158 and Coon Path, and after taking a look at the amount of houses and the existing speed limit signs that are in parts of the corridor, we realized there's a section that doesn't have that. So we went ahead and performed the study, submitted to ODOT, and they came back with a new speed limit, so we're going to reduce that.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolutions passed 3-0. Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2022-11-15-F, a resolution for approval of change order number three to the contract between Vergey Dynamex Energy Services and Fairfield County Commissioners.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0. Fairfield County Information Technology, Resolution 2022-11-15-G, a resolution to approve the purchase of Cisco Duo Security Licensing Implementation Services between CDW Government under State of Ohio, term schedule 534605, Fairfield County Board of Commissioners for the purposes of enhanced security for county operations.
Discussion?
I was remiss in not thanking, and it's not because she just walked in the door, but Amy, I'm proud of her efforts and assistance through the whole procurement process when we're talking about terms and conditions and licensing and that sort of thing. Again, they're just fantastic to work with, so thank you and appreciate.
Any further discussion?
He has more coming, Amy.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0. Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2022-11-15-H, a resolution authorizing the approval to extend the repayment date of an advance funds, Fund 2072 Public Children's Services Subfund 8182 Epic Grant.
Second.
Is there discussion? She has a beautiful singing voice that I never knew about. I'm amazed. Hearing then discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolutions passed 3-0. Fairfield County Juvenile and Provea Court, Resolution 2022-11-15-Q, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in the major expenditure object category, Juvenile Court Fund 2036, Department of Youth Services reclaim.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0. From the Fairfield County Recorder, Resolution 2022-11-15-R, resolution approving account-to-account transfer to allow proper classification of major expenditure object categories.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2022-11-15-S, a resolution to approve final acceptance of the Meadowmore Section 2 Phase 2 subdivision.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolutions passed 3-0. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2022-11-15-U, a resolution authorizing the approval of repayment of an advance to the general fund on 2503, please revolting.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0. From the Fairfield County Treasurer, Resolution 2022-11-15-P, a resolution to approve an e-payment services agreement between Point and Pay LLC and Fairfield County for the processing of electronic payments.
Any discussion?
So do you want to know?
Well, here's what I want to know. I'm a customer of, say, for example, Lake Street Ziliz, and I have a occupy set home. Most of it just gets paid, and the service fee on it is 2.5%, which I pay because I don't want to mess with it. But I think the service fee at 2.5% is extraordinary. And I was just curious what the service fee was in this situation.
It is a credit card, 2.35, minimum of $2. A debit card is 1% minimum, $1.50, and each check is $1.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Levacey.
Yes.
Commissioner. Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. For the payment of bills. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven dot fifteen dot W, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavacy.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, at nine AM.
So before we go into executive session, is there any other business before the Commission this morning? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
During motion, going to executive session to discuss pending litigation. In that session, I'd like to have the Commissioners and administrative deputies here. Representatives from the prosecutor's office. Outside counsel.
I want to thank you for prosecuting.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavacy.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes, we are in executive session. Thank you.
What I consider to be my office.